Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to the order. And the first thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, staff has no agenda changes to present this evening?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. You guys reviewed that, I'll entertain the moment to do that.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions or discussion on the consent agenda, I would make motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you. And tonight, we're going to review the motions in seventy games. So I'll go to Jamie for that.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the consent agenda for July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, as submitted, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
Have the motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. And we have approved the consent agenda. Next item on our agenda is public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council this evening? Please take your position at the podium and make sure you speak clearly so everybody can hear you. We will begin in five minutes.
I'm actually asking if Heather Smith, who is here today, right here, if I can read a statement that she's prepared for City Council. It's, she would like to lock her time today.
Ethan?
Yes, we can either approve it in advance or at the five-minute mark, you can ask if there's a council motion to approve additional time.
Okay, we're going to start by giving you five minutes. And then if that's not enough, we'll go to the council.
Okay. My name is Heather Smith. My purpose in writing this statement is to voice my apprehensions. I have concerns regarding the Hallstead mayor and his attendance at the Harbin County sentencing hearing on July ninth, case number two-two-zero-one-nine-C-R-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-three. My son was the victim of a violent assault in Hallstead. The assault took place through the Hallstead High School's work-study program by his employer during his senior year. My son's assailant forcibly restrained him and held a loaded gun to his head. During the assault, my son pleaded with his attacker and begged him to stop. When this violent assault stopped, my son's emotional distress started. His trauma affects him still to this day. My son smiles and lives life, sometimes pretending to be okay, but he's not okay, he's still haunted by this attack. The events will forever scar him. For the last year, I helplessly watched his perpetrator exploit my son's trauma. The stress on a victim before court is unimaginable. Due to this stress, at the urge of the county attorney's office, my son agreed to allow his offender to accept a plea deal. It's common for victims to want closure so they can heal. I support my son's decision, but it's heartbreaking. It's difficult for a mother when you can't fix a trauma. I can't take away what happened to my son, but I can stand up for him today, and I'm asking every council member to do the same. Many things were troubling during this sentencing hearing. The defense attorney introduced the Hallstead mayor by stating he was in the audience and wished to give a statement asking for leniency. I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. The mayor of Hallstead attending the hearing for a violent criminal to influence the court's mercy and sentencing? It was suggested that the city of Hallstead has experienced some form of economic decline if this criminal was subjected to incarceration. The person who hurt my son and his supporters intended to appeal to the court for sixty days of house arrest for threatening, intimidating, forcibly restraining, and holding a loaded gun to my son's head. Adding insult, three other lobbyists attended this hearing. Each supporter present campaigned for my son's attacker. These lobbyists included a lady officer at my bank's institution. Adding to insult, my son wasn't allowed to have supporters because of COVID-19. I believe the mayor has a moral and ethical obligation to his community. Why does economic growth signify importance over justice? Perhaps your mayor had nothing to gain by supporting my son. A mayor's title is for servitude of his community, not to capitalize from the criminal activities of those. I write this statement and ask the committee to help me support my son. He put a gun to my head. Those were the last words by a victim when he audio-recorded his attack. I'm more nervous than I am the first time I spoke with all of you. At that meeting, two council members resigned, Jerry Dean and Roger Lowery. Why did they resign? I think they considered the integrity of this committee they shared with Dennis Travis. I sent you each an email, and in that email was background information, photos, and audio recording, sentencing transcripts, and a statement from Heather Smith, which I just read. On July ninth, Mayor Dennis Travis attended a sentencing hearing in support of a violent felon. This felon pleaded no contest to a seven-person felony. The defense attorney entered a motion for departure of probation and asked for house arrest instead of jail time. The transcripts show Dennis Travis being identified as present in the courtroom and labeled him the mayor of Hallstead on page eight, line four, and five. The transcripts also show the intent of those present, and it was to express an interest to the court and grant a motion for this departure of probation to house arrest. The transcripts go on to say on page nine, line fifteen through twenty, "The offender has made a great deal of sacrifice," and I believe the mayor would point out that he's taken a great deal of financial...dot-dot. "It's been very difficult to run business remotely due to administrative rule with Department of Corrections." Why or what would the mayor point out about these facts? My attendance today is about ethics, morals, and integrity of our city and who we stand behind versus who our leader sees as one. A moral precept is an idea or an opinion that's driven by a desired good. An ethical code is a set of rules that defines allowable actions or correct behaviors. Was it unethical or immoral for our mayor to show such support for a criminal? What did you have to gain by it? Is it unethical to use the title of mayor to try and influence a sentencing if you or the city capitalizes from it? It is unethical because it's discriminatory. It suggests a different set of rules for criminals that own local businesses versus private citizens. I ask, is this city capitalizing from this offender? Or is our mayor somehow capitalizing from this felony? Our mayor argues that the defense attorney did not have his permission to use his title as mayor. He claims he went as a private citizen to attend this hearing. I question his intent. If he intended to be a private citizen, did he tap city resources before the hearing? Did he ask the city attorney or the city administrator before the hearing about going? If he didn't utilize those city resources, then I would argue he wasn't presenting as a private citizen. He showed a premeditated intent to attend as the Hallstead mayor. As a private citizen, how or what do you intend to show? What does taking a deal of financial...dot-dot mean? Dennis Travis, as a private citizen, has no influence. The title of mayor represents an entire city and represents all of us. Dennis Travis, our mayor, also suggested that he has personal friends with this felony. As friends, you would know the criminal activity your friend is involved in. If you don't know these facts, then I would argue you are not friends. I witnessed Dennis Travis in Marty Martin's office. Dennis Travis knows that I witnessed him there. In two thousand sixteen, I brought this back before City Council, and I'm here again in two thousand twenty. Ed, you were there. The city attorney was there, Ethan was here. Everybody else is new. I'm asking all council members to question third integrity. Can you honestly maintain a productive partnership with our mayor as a committee? If you are questioning our mayor's ethics and morals, then you've got to question the committee's integrity. I'm asking all of you to request the mayor's resignation. He cannot serve his community without discriminating and designated separate rules for business owners. In two thousand sixteen, two council members questioned their committee's integrity. They questioned Dennis Travis's ethics and morals, and they resigned. I'm asking each council member to take a stand with the victim of a violent felony. I'm asking you to refuse to work with the person who has questionable morals and ethics because it places doubt on the integrity of our city government. I'm asking you to examine the integrity of this committee with our mayor in office. I'm asking you to question yourselves. Do you stand behind our city leader, the mayor of Hallstead, Dennis Travis? Thank you for your time.
Are you sure that's all the time you need?
What else would you like me to assess?
If you're thinking, please take a seat.
I'll do that, thank you.
As a member of the Hallstead governing body, we normally do not respond to comments during public forum. Tonight is well within my authority to make an exception. I was at this sentencing hearing. I had cleared my attendance with City Attorney Brad Chance prior to my attendance to ensure I was not in any violation of law or oath of office. I was simply there as a regular gentleman to support a friend. I did not speak at this hearing. I was in attendance with other Hallstead persons, some of whom are here tonight in my support. Mrs. Meyer reached out to me with her concern shortly after this event due to the way Mr. Wilson, the defendant's attorney, announced my presence to the court. I had explained the situation to her, and based on her appearance this evening, evidently she doesn't feel I was truthful. I will give Mr. Wilson a moment to speak. Please take a stand.
Uh, thank you, sir. My name is Matt Wilson, I'm attorney in Dooking, and I did represent and do represent Mr. Martin. First of all, Mrs. Smith, you're absolutely correct. Your son is the victim of a violent crime. That violent crime, and the impact of that violent crime, occurred two days prior to the events that were recited at this moment. Now, I have some personal experience to draw from. And without commenting on the details of the case, it's still open and open, there is still some controversy in the case. And without speaking against my comment, I was a sheriff's deputy for quite a while, well, for four years. About ten years ago, a hundred pounds ago. And I had the distinct pleasure of entertaining two unwelcome guests in my home. Those two individuals came through my back door, my wife and children, on the other end of the house. And luckily, I saw the door open, saw those two individuals coming. I grabbed the pistol and scared them off, got them out. I got lucky. Mr. Martin, on the mining question, was not quite so lucky. He was asleep in the early morning hours with his girlfriend. They were in a bed, they were in bed again. And they were awakened by two masked men, two men. Dragged them out, they were both unclothed. Dragged them out, held them and gunned them in front of their lungs, demanding access to a safe. It was... What happened next is just not shy of the road. His girlfriend, at that time, reached for a phone, and she attempted to call nine-one-one. One of the assailants grabbed her, threw her across the bed, and was in the process of tying her up. But Martin knocked the gun away from the second assailant and beat him to the floor. He fought for his life that night, and won. He fought for his girlfriend's life that night, and won. Within twenty-four hours, he had a very unfortunate encounter with this woman. Very unfortunate encounter with this woman. None of these facts are outside of anything that wouldn't amount to common knowledge to his friends, to his friends. Mr. Martin expressed this entire story to his friends, and those, some of those friends, and all. Some of those friends were present at his sentencing. Now, during the sentencing, I did introduce Mr. Travis as the mayor of Hallstead. I did it unthankfully because that's how I know Mr. Travis, as the mayor of Hallstead. He did not speak. The plea agreement that was made and the request for the house arrest had more to do with COVID-19 concerns at that time than it did with mitigating a negotiated settlement. We regret, I regret, one person, Mr. Martin. And the result of that, we have an unresolved bid that generated not one victim or two victims that were in that room that night, but another, and those criminals, those individuals, we need to find. I can't speak for Mr. Travis, and I can't speak for any of the other people that were present. They were not called upon to testify. Their presence did not alter the outcome of the sentencing. They were there for moral support to the threat. An individual who had a brush with something that could have been very bad. As a matter of fact, it could have been the topic of conversation that lasted for years in this committee, of a home invasion that ended in two deaths. I have nothing further to say, and thank you.
Matt, I appreciate you appearing tonight. Josh, this is an email from Mr. Wilson that was sent over to the plaintiff's attorney.
Uh, it would be the county attorney.
The county attorney, plainly stating that it was not my intention to be introduced as the mayor of Hallstead. And Matt's made that clear here tonight, and feel free to give that to Dana for evidence.
Additionally, I did notify the prosecuting attorney of my misstep in introducing him as the mayor. Once I received a phone call from Mr. Travis to realize what I'd done, I called Jason Lane, the county attorney, and notified him that it was not my intent to use the office of the mayor or the position in the city of Hallstead or anything like that to leverage or put any pressure on prosecutors. During that telephone conversation, Mr. Wayne indicated that that never occurred to him, but he thanked me for the phone call anyway. Now, Mrs. Smith, we people we love, we use these events, people who built these things, but we will find those two individuals. We will find those two co-starries, Mr. Martin.
All right, thank you, Matt, for being here. Brad, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time? Is there any other council member that would like to speak?
I would. I thank you for your attendance and for your discussion. And I'm heartfelt, I know your son, you're studying at the middle school, and I'm heartfelt sorrow for what happened to him. But I think it's important to point out that Dennis, whatever Dennis did, he acted on his own. It had nothing at all to do with the council. We were not appraised of this, we did not approve it, we did not condone it. So I want to separate whatever he did from the governing body and make sure that there's no confusion. We knew nothing about what his attempt was, what he did.
I've got something to say, but somebody very willing to come here. I'm just still trying to wrap my head around some of this stuff here. Go ahead. Whether or not Dennis was introduced as mayor or not, my personal belief, when you are a public figure, you're a servant of the community, yes, you still have rights, yes, you can still choose who you want your friends to be. But I think there are circumstances where you have to forego those for...I'm not sure what the right word would be. But nonetheless, I can use a purely, truly foreform and portage for the mayor to attend this, whether it was grand or not. I wasn't informed that Mr. Travis, the mayor, was going to attend this sentencing hearing. If an individual, Mayor Travis is not a dumb man, I'm sure he goes into circumstances with eyes wide open. I'm sure he knows what type of person Mr. Martin is. Why an individual would choose to have a friend like that, align himself with somebody who conducts himself Why would you want a friend like that? It doesn't win, I don't get it. I can't...you're on your own on this one.
I'm...anybody else?
I am so sorry for what happened to your son. And again, we did not know that Dennis was going to attend the hearing. We were asked, we were given the opportunity to express our opinions. I will say that I've had some friends do some pretty stupid things in the past, and some things that were very detrimental. You stand by your friends, if they're truly your friends. Sometimes we don't do that in the proper way, and sometimes we have to remember that our presence of things sometimes can give you a lot of pressure on other people. I am so sorry for that. And just that this was not something that the city had anything to do with.
I do have one more thing to say. I did speak with Councilman Farmer, and he can confirm this. He did ask me to...I told him how I felt about this circumstances, and I told him what I was very likely going to say. And he said, "Use that for me also. I agree with you, George." So Mr. Farmer, Councilman Farmer's sentiments are the same.
Just from my perspective, what I want to say is, very sorry about what's happened to your son and your family. You know, and as a representative of the city, you know, when we have those actions and all that occur in town, especially when it...it doesn't matter whether it's a minor or whether it's an adult, it's not something that should ever occur. But I do just want to say, very sorry for what happened. We hope that we do catch the other perpetrators that was somewhat involved in this. That's all I have.
Well, that being said, you know, I do offer my sympathies for what you and your son have been through as well. That's separate from my issue with Mrs. Meyer. I could end my comments here. As, you know, it's quite clear there was no wrongdoing on my part. The attorney that made the statement told me clearly it was his fault. He was the one that made the connection to my title without my permission. So I could probably stop here, but I won't. You see, there aren't only so many times you can kick a dog without getting bit. And I'm fed up with Mrs. Meyer's attempts to discredit my character. This is not the first time she has made me a focal point in her personal crusade. She brought it up several years ago. When she had an issue with a local police officer, she made an attempt to undermine my character in the public eye while I served on the council, simply because the officer was a friend of mine. Tonight is just an extension of her shenanigans. The defendant in this case is an ex-employer of Mrs. Meyer's. And this is simply a case of a disgruntled employee trying to get a thorn in this man's side or anybody this man is associated with. She has taken to social media to try and damage him, spitballing what only can be held as bold-faced lies and accusations. I would like to respectfully ask her to stop unless she has significant evidence of wrongdoing on my part or she may find that she will be the defendant in the next hearing I attend. With that, I pray that she can find peace and maturity. Now, it's my right to move on our agenda. The public forum is closed. We'll move on to unfinished business, and there is none, so we'll move to new business. And the first item is a funding request from the Old Settlers Committee.
Good evening, my name is Alan Webber, I'm the chairperson for the 2020 Old Settlers Committee. On behalf of the Old Settlers Committee, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city of Hallstead for all of their tough fight here, the city staff, all their efforts to make things run smoothly. We are, once again this year, going to try to have some sort of a celebration. And we'd like to ask the City Council for the annual donation for this year's Old Settlers events. At this point, we plan to have just the fireworks celebration for Old Settlers, just so we can say we had it. It's going to cost approximately four thousand dollars.
So there are no other events planned for the Old Settlers then? As a standard?
At this point in time, yeah. Unless things get much better.
Not a lot of time.
That's all I have for this evening.
So is it your request for four thousand dollars for fireworks?
Yes.
Um, yeah. In the past, for the last, past couple of years that I've been on the council, we have had, we have provided ready for insurance. Do you not need that simply because you don't have all of the other activities? Is there other insurance that needs to, is the four thousand what you need for insurance and fireworks and all that?
Uh, I would have to look into that. I don't know that the fireworks... I was putting on a fireworks show. Should have insurance.
Normally, yeah, without the other events, fireworks contractors should carry their own liability insurance, which covers it generally. The special event policy is for the entire weekend.
Often activities on Sunday.
Any other questions?
With no other events, then is there need for additional golf carts?
I mean, I would...
So then golf carts, the ordinance should cover the golf carts as we have it stated now.
Any other questions? Thank you.
They were easy ones.
Sorry, the short celebration.
I'm part of the sketch and I made the motion to approve a donation to the Old Settlers Committee for an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars. Have the motion in the second on the floor. We will go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to approve a donation to the Old Settlers Committee for an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars, seconded by Councilmember Claussen.
Have the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a funding request from the Harbin County Economic Development Council. I believe that is here tonight. Speak, Chris.
I wanted to talk to you. Thank you for this time this evening. Wanted to give our funding request for 2021, and then also highlight some of our activities. So I may finish everything, the amount that we'll be asking for, but we're passing around the fuller agenda, so if you can look at that. The amount is the same as last year, we're keeping that level. It's also the same as we asked for in 2015. So it did increase for a few years, around 2015, but then we brought it back down. So it's eighteen thousand, that makes about five point four percent of our budget. We know that what went on with COVID, that money's going to be tight. So we are looking at this year with money that's left over because we're not...if you look at our budget a lot, it is in foreign sentences, and we're not having, we're not winning conferences because they're canceled, we're doing a lot of Zoom conferences and meetings. But we think we'll have between thirty and fifty thousand, but we didn't spend... But we didn't spend it. We don't want to take that and put it in the bank. We want to do that back to the communities. So we're brainstorming ideas. We don't come up with anything that our boards really support to get behind. We will give that money back to each community in the portion that they paid in so that we're not just. We had ideas in our last board meeting and ways that we could go out to manufacturers and if they were doing things right and they could get gift cards. So if there's a Halsted manufacturer, we can give them gift cards for machine protectors. I mean, we're trying to think of things like that where we can get the money circulated, but also reward employers for having our employees do the right thing. Still working on my idea that the full board will support. On our board now, we have two appointed members, and also we've got Ethan and Mayor Travis. And we really support or appreciate your guys' support in coming to our meetings and being vocal and sharing ideas. It's important that we have all the communities there. So with COVID happening a couple of months in, and things really took a turn for our scope of work. We're really focused on trying to make sure that the companies find all the information they need, how they can take advantage of the resources that are out there. So with other communities that have a full-time chamber, some of our communities are in a position where you do have a chamber that's more of a volunteer organization, on which now I'm on the chamber board of Halsted. We saw a gap, so there is that need for us to set up in some community areas that other places are getting filled with the new testing chambers. So here in Burton, in Sedgway, we really have to set up our community effort to make sure that those smaller businesses are finding out the information. Ethan and I are on the Spark Committee that Harvey County has, that there are seven people appointed to that. So we're reviewing applications that are coming in for the county receives the $7 million and how that will be allocated. We meet weekly for a couple of hours with the other members of that group. With all that, we still have a lot of RFPs coming in, so we are seeing project activity. It didn't stop. We had 17 RFPs here today, which is a little higher than last year. So that's a little bit crazy, but businesses are still looking to be forward to it right now. Out of that 17, there are four that we were able to submit Halsted on. One was a data center and that one is still promising. It was really, I was really excited about that when it came in. And then it seemed like it needed after it came in, COVID happened. And that's still on hold. They're not going somewhere else and they are very interested in the Halsted industrial park for that project. Several years ago, about a decade ago, they did an identical project at the New Industrial Park. So it is someone that we've worked with in the past and feel confident with. Another one is hit processing. You know, that's something that they've been here for a couple of site visits. Another one is a global aerospace manufacturer and that we committed Halsted industrial park on. And another one is a plastic manufacturer. So we are getting lips here. We did do an environmental geo-geotechnical survey before the industrial park and that was something that we didn't have for your industrial park. We had it for some of the other communities. And so we thought that, so it makes it much easier. We want to submit because all that information has already been documented for us.
Can you describe the geotechnical survey? Is that what you call it?
Yeah, so we had Allied Environment, Allied come out and they just helped do testing on the soil bearing. We have a stack about this large with different tabs for when any when any new companies come in, they want to know that's been done prior to them because it takes away a layer of uncertainty for where they're going to be. And do you guys have questions? I'm sorry. I am just randomly. Yeah, so things, the retention business is slow. We're still making phone calls and trying to make sure that we're visiting manufacturers because it changes weekly. I had a manufacturer meeting that I talked to two weeks ago. Everything was fine. I talked to him on Friday. They laid off 35% of their employees. So it's just our manufacturers, they were doing really well compared to Cedric County where they're having mass layoffs, but with the supply chain naturally causing problems for them. And so I think that we're going to see the manufacturers start being hit here harder than we have in the past couple of months. All right. Thank you guys for really contributing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to grant funding requests from Harvey County Economic Development Council for 2021 budget year in an amount not to exceed $18,000.
Have the motion and second, we will go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to grant funding requests from Harvey County Economic Development Council for the 2021 budget year for an amount not to exceed $18,000, seconded by Councilmember Klassen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to our next item. 2021 proposed budget publication and sending at a public hearing. The final step to all the city staff's hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council heard in our budget work session, proposed budget sets a combined mill rate off that assessed valuation at 74.353 mils, which would be a slight decline of .003 from the proposed 2020 budget. The proposed budget falls within our tax limit, so it does not prompt a citywide vote to approve the budget. Major changes included the elimination of the recreation fund, the activities at which are absorbed by Parks and Recreation Department and our general fund, an increase in our special liability fund as we shift our liability insurance costs over to be paid out of that fund as opposed to the general fund. And then we did note that we did have to unfortunately, due to projected revenue loss, decrease the amount of funds that we have been historically setting aside for street work, although we have kept that still measurably larger than it was even four years ago and do still plan to continue street repairs as that money and funds would allow. After you give approval for this budget to be published, you may adopt a budget that has a lower tax limit. You just can't adopt one with a higher unless we republish. So all we're doing tonight essentially is approving that proposed budget to go to publication and then the budget hearing will be held in conjunction with our next regular council meeting on August 10th, which keeps us in line with the state statute regarding budget adoption.
I'm part of this discussion. I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed 2021 budget. It's a Halsted on Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. An authorized publication of notice and proposed budget summary.
Second. First motion and the second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to set a public hearing for the proposed 2021 budget for the City of Halsted on Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. An authorized publication of notice and the proposed budget summary, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
The motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries unanimously and probably put that budget out to the public. Item number four under new business is consideration of resolution number 07-27-20-03. This has got to do with the coronavirus relief funding. Ethan?
Thank you. As Beth mentioned, Harvey County did receive money from the CARES Act that was passed through the Spark Committee at the state level. Part of the reviews funds were earmarked to help make public institutions whole. So we will be requesting reimbursement for expenses we have had related to the COVID-19 pandemic from March 1st through July 31st. And then in order to be eligible for that, the county has requested that cities who wish to receive funding pass a resolution, which is included in the package. That is a resolution that works with the League of Kansas municipalities and then the Kansas Association of Counties to get that in a form that the city attorneys could all be comfortable with and the counties are comfortable with that just basically says if we get awarded funds and for any reason during the audit of these funds, when that occurs, if something is found to be not a covered expense or, you know, basically we're taking financial responsibility for any funds we ask for under this program. So, you know, that normally is the county received all of it there or the agency, but they would like, of course, and understandably so, to make the cities have some skin in the game, so to speak. So this resolution is not available to be changed. It has to be adopted as it's presented. Brad has had a chance to review this in the meantime, I'm sure, in multiple cities. What was passed around there, you can see the $12,379.86 is cost for PPE and personnel that we haven't heard so far. And then the proposed itemized budget, you can see are things that we are working on submitting for the direct aid plan that the county is working on. You can see a majority of those relate to our EMS department, either for decontamination materials, things like ventilators or video airway management. It will help keep our crews safe. So these are not things that we are for sure going to get. This goes into a plan. And if we submit it, the one item I will note, and we talked a little bit about it at the work session, is the ventilators. In order to meet the timeline, we do need to get those authorized. We can run this with the COVID-19 pandemic if there's no council objection. We do have adequate funds in the equipment fund. Everything we read from the government has indicated that these ventilators are an allowable expense. So again, there is no reason that we foresee why this should be rejected. However, if for some reason it would get pulled out of the county's plan or eventually flagged later, we would be responsible for that. However, we need ventilators just to be able to deliver the best patient care to our residents. And so again, I would ask if, for consensus at least, for us to go ahead and get those on order to try and make sure that we have delivery of those prior to December 31st because obviously there's a lot of, a lot of agencies, hospitals, et cetera, that are ordering ventilators right now. So lead time is pretty outstretched for that. Other than that though, you can see, I mean, things like upgrades that allow us to to hold better remote meetings than we're currently able to for the council room, increasing our ability for our staff to be able to work remotely. It's be if we have to shut the office down are all items that we're looking at submitting. Again, it doesn't mean it will be approved, but we are hoping to be able to leave up this capability to increase our ability to respond and keep our employees safe.
Any questions?
Yes. One item from the bottom, that line I crossed, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a, that's an updated estimate for, and that would be, that's full encompassing, like microphone, video system.
Sure. And that's not, it's pretty close to what we were hearing.
Yeah.
Pretty close to what we're hearing.
So anybody else who knows about anything?
Yeah, so Ethan, just real quick.
Say it.
The general staff. I think I stated for $1,000, is that really not considering the continuation of this with the COVID-19?
Um, we believe that like, when we say the general staff, that's more cloth masks and the paper mask service. They refer to it as PPE, even though, you know, it's not. Andy, as far as like medical or police, they have their own line items for that. This would be the mask we hand out to people when they come to the lobby. We don't foresee a lot because we did just recently stock up and again, trying to be good stewards, this is public's money. The intent is for us to estimate what we need to get through the end of the year, not necessarily bulk up to get us four years down the road. So we're trying to be conservative, but not too conservative.
I have one question, Ethan, and it's primarily concerning the ventilators themselves. And it's only because this is not an industry I'm familiar with, so Denise, I may be relying on you here. Are our paramedics able to put a patient on a ventilator?
Yeah, we have the medical protocols to, we currently have one ventilator. This would see all of our ambulances outfitted with a ventilator.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check. So I don't have any other questions.
So you're just getting consensus on the ventilators and then the motion for?
And the motion for the resolution. Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 07-27-20-03, accepting coronavirus relief funds for the City of Halsted and authorization for Mayor to sign. First motion and second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to approve resolution number 07-27-20-03, a resolution accepting coronavirus relief funds for the City of Halsted as distributed by Harvey County according to the terms therein, and authorization for Mayor Travis to sign, seconded by Councilmember Klassen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Do you need anything done on ventilators?
That motion carries unanimously to accept that resolution and staff does have a consensus to move forward on the ventilators. We good, Brad?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda, that does finish up new business and we have one executive session on the agenda, an attorney-client privilege. So I'll entertain that question as soon as Ethan gets done writing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75-4319B2. To include governing body, city manager, city attorney. Open meeting to reconvene at 8:15.
Second. Got the motion and the second, we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to move the Halsted City Council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75-4319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney, with the opening, open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:15 PM, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We will be moving to executive session. Ethan, would you like to?
Okay, we suffered a slight technical problem there, but we are back for our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, I would say we don't have any action from that executive session and we'll move on to the next section of our agenda and that is the report section. And let's see, I picked on Ed last week, so I'll start with Denise tonight. Mr. Wallace. Mr. Torres.
No, sir.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, I noticed all these freshly painted fire pipers, but I think they look very good. We don't know where they are.
Should make every dog in town happy. I don't have anything this evening, so we'll move on to the manager report and back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council, just keeping it very brief. A lot of my time has been spent working on Spark Committee and finalizing the budget last week and then to update on some major projects. Becker Building has ended the project at Lake Company, so that is hopefully done and buttoned up. We did hear from Zinner, who was supposed to begin the AMI project, that they are still delayed and they are now August 10th. Thank you. August 10th is when they will be coming out, so we will still be doing manual reads this week and not doing the estimate. And then we will get started rolling on the tent. They hope that that is the last time they will have to delay for us. So we'll get that AMI project started. Other than that, business as usual for the city. Not a whole lot to report that's new and outstanding unless there's any specific questions.
I have a clarification question. Perhaps you can answer. When the AMI comes into effect, how are? When the AMI comes into effect, how, how is the transition from the existing billing system to the new current reading going to affect our users?
So most likely, if we transition, we would have one month where we would use historical data in the system to estimate reads, which would only affect those that, like, level pay would stay consistent no matter what. And then the next month, when you actually had the AMI transmitting that data, you would true up and base, or, you know, if you estimated high, then some people have a little bit lower bill, or if you estimate low, they have a higher bill going forward. It integrates with our billing software, and they're already working on the backend of doing that. It's basically, right now, we have a handheld that's, you know, has hand injury as far as all the readings, and then converts that into a, you know, giant computer file that's uploaded into billing and corresponds to houses and premise addresses and meter IDs. All that information would be part of the AMI, and they're building that master file. So it should be seamless, because all the meter IDs will transfer.
It'll be pretty transparent to the end user billing.
Yeah, it will come, and we do expect, you know, I mean, especially if you happen to be at a home that has, you know, one of those older mechanical meters on the water side, you know, some people might be surprised of what their usage is with a new meter. So, I mean, we'll, we plan to work with everyone. These new meters will give us the ability, you know, to see in real time what is happening. Now, we're only getting those updates if we're called out or on these monthly reads, so. But there may be one month where we have to estimate, and the, it's computer program, and it will look at historical data for property uses. Yep, to make a reasonable estimate, if you will.
Any other questions for Ethan, Council? If not, that does conclude our agenda this evening, and I understand a motion for adjournment. So move. Have the motion in a second. One more time, I'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to adjourn the Halsted City Council meeting at eight twenty-two P M., seconded by Councilmember Klassen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. We are adjourned. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Halsted.